Yeah, I don't know if she ever wrote in the complaint for you. Not really for her because she already wrote it on strong.
Oh, the sister? I don't know.
Maybe she copied and pasted it from.
I don't know. The time is five thirty P M. On Monday, April seventeenth, and I'd like to call this work session to order. Up first on our agenda are our lobbyist update. So, Mr. Romero, please take it away.
All right. Good evening, members of Publicity Council. We are in the last twenty days of legislative session, or as I call, as I call it, this is when the session begins. First hundred days, a lot of work gets done, but the most important, the most significant, and probably the most significant for the city of Pueblo. Those bills are going to be heard in the last twenty days. Just to give you a sort of a score sheet on what the legislature has done thus far this year. They have two hundred and ninety-six bills remaining on both the Senate and House calendar. There were one hundred and sixty bills that have been sent to the governor for signature, and one hundred and fourteen bills were killed. A total of five hundred and seventy bills have been introduced, two hundred and ninety-four in the House with sixty-five members and two hundred and eighty-four in the Senate with thirty-five members. So obviously, the Senate's pretty, pretty busy in introducing legislation, but this is the, the, the time of the year when I was in the legislature, those fourteen years, that we really have to pay attention. This is when most members are really tired, mistakes can be made, and some of those mistakes can impact the city. So I want to begin with the, the two most significant bills on the calendar this week. I will let you know that we will send you the links to these bills when these bills start so that you can listen to them. You can also participate if you wanted to testify or register an opinion or input on the bills. The first is the land use bill, which was heard last, you know, last week, only testimony. And so tomorrow, the committee will convene at two P M. And this is when they'll start them, what they call markup the bill. This is when they'll start to offer amendments to the bill. We, we've heard that there are a number of amendments that would would impact Pueblo. For example, for, for cities such as Pueblo, amendment would reduce the maximum density requirement per lot from six residential units to four. There's also amendment that would allow cities to retain some power over parking requirements. Specifically, it would allow cities to require parking space for every two housing units in residential areas and long, and, and long key quarters. With that said, the bill will, will, will override a local zoning authority. This, as we've said previous in our previous discussions with you, this is the, the most significant, in my opinion, overreach on local government that I've seen since I've been lobby at, at the legislature. It takes significant control away from a local government. We will, we will send out the amendments in real time as we get them so that you can see them. In, and, and I'll just pause here just for a second. If there's any questions during the day, especially with the, the, the other, this bill and the ozone bill, if there are questions that you have or you want to call me or any of the members of our team, please do that because these bills do have significant impact on, on city authority. So that bill will, will, as I said, will, we will send out, and we apologize in advance. You're going to be getting a lot of information over the next twenty days and probably a lot of information over the next two or three days. The other bill finally was introduced this past Friday is House Bill twelve ninety-four. This is the pollution protection measures. I've had a chance to review this in detail. It, there are significant permitting I won't say restraint, they're, they're, they're permitting barriers for, for those that fall under the Air Quality Control Commission. I've been, I've been on meetings with folks that represent Everest. They, they think it could significantly curtail their business and their ability to operate. That is true of other manufacturers that have been on these stakeholder calls. This is one of the toughest permitting bills that we've, we've seen. I will give you an update. We've had an opportunity today and, and Thursday and Friday to have discussions with staff from the governor's office. The governor still has significant concerns about this bill. He is going to wait to see what happens with amendments to the bill. The bill will be heard this coming Thursday at one thirty. We will send out that link as well. We will send out amendments in real time so that you can take a look that, look at those. The most helpful thing that we'll try to do is sometimes just sending you the amendments is not helpful. If you can't put them in context, we'll try to do a summary at the end of the day for both of these bills so that you can take a look at them after those amendments have been heard. I, I would advise city council that for the pollution protection measures to seriously consider taking a position of opposition to this bill. But I also think the land use bill is another one that I think you need to seriously consider the implications. Those are the two most important bills that we'll follow this week and try to provide you as much detailed information and summaries that you can get the best assessment on the bill. I don't know if I've, if other members of my team, if I've left anything out. That's our report, counsel.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Romero, for that update. What questions regarding his update are there from council? Counselor Graham?
This is more for the council, but are we ready to make a, take a stance on either of these bills for Gil to start advocating for us?
I, I had lunch with an Everest executive that they've hired. And it really will hurt jobs, I think, in the long run if this thing goes through. So I, I, I think at least in that one, we should, which was my question to Gil. Should this be in the form of a letter or resolution? What, what is your advice on that?
What, what we need in order for us to actively, I mean actively contact legislators that are on the committee and then start actively engaging other members because we assume this bill is going to get out of committee. We're still trying to, you know, we don't, you know, obviously, we want the governor as the backstop, but we want to try to get this bill killed. But, but if we have some sort of affirmation from city council, if you take a vote today and that's recorded, that's, that's all we need for to satisfy the Secretary of State, and then we can change our position with the Secretary of State to say that we oppose the bill. So it doesn't matter what form it is, Counselor Flores, as long as we have that.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, Mr. Romero, I, I, because today is a work session, we cannot vote formally, but we can give direction to staff. And I think that that would be an appropriate thing to do. Would that work, Gil?
Yes, yes, as long as we have some affirmation, you know, in whatever form that is that we could go back and, and if someone questioned us on on, you know, you know, you know, as we opposed the bill, somebody questioned, you know, what the position of the city is, we can go back to that, whatever that event is.
Counselor Atencio.
Yeah, Gil, have you talked to anybody from C M L? I receive emails from them on especially the landly, land use bill.
And yeah, they, I, I think we're, yeah, yes, they, to answer your question, we have been in conversations with the Colorado Municipal League. There are going to be several amendments made to this bill. I, I don't know if it'll put it in a form, Counselor Atencio, that the city would if, if not, you know, if they wouldn't, if, I, I don't know if you'd ever be positioned to support this bill because it is such a significant intrusion into local control, and that's always been that, that line, you know, that, you know, these are things usually normally reserved to the, to the cities. But there's this pressure about urban sprawl and, you know, these other events that are occurring in the state that now have caused this significant land use bill to to come forward. And so I, I do, you know, on this, on that bill, you certainly could wait until we see the amendments on that bill, but, you know, certainly for the most part, C M L is working to oppose this bill.
That's true. Well, I would suggest that we give some kind of direction to Gil.
To that, that would, that would be really helpful.
We talked to our contingent, Hendrickson and Morrow and Martinez.
Is that a question, question for me, Counselor? Yes, I have, but here, here's our problem. We, we will give them information and relay concerns from, from council, but until you take a position, you know, then we can't convey to them that you're opposed to it, and that, that's what they're looking for. And so especially on this, on this, the land use bill, because that's in the Senate, and, and we have a great relationship with Senator Hendrickson and Senator Cleve Simpson, and they, they're looking to us to, to let them know what Pueblo is going to, what position Pueblo is going to take. Those are two bills that we, we would encourage you to take positions on.
Great. So I think the direction is needed to oppose the land use bill first. Mayor, did you have anything?
If, if it's a consensus of council, we'll send a letter to Gil tomorrow indicating that it's consensus of the council that we oppose the land use bill. I intend to go to Denver on Thursday. The air quality bill was set for hearing Thursday afternoon, so I'm going to go up with the contingent of Everest and other people from Pueblo, so.
Let us, let us know what you need, Mr. Mayor, on Thursday, anything we can do to accommodate you when you get there.
All right. I was given a document by Everest about how they compare as, as a manufacturing company with manufacturers throughout the United States and other countries. And we are on the lower end. And so, and, and I'll, I'll make sure that you have a copy of that. If you don't have one, I don't know if you, if you got anything from them. It's a really important document that, that I was told I could share. But the second irony of this whole thing is most people don't know that Everest Steel is the largest recycler of metals in the state of Colorado. So here you have a company that is dealing with pollution, with them recycling all of this metal everywhere. And they could affect, this bill could effectively hurt them. So anyway, those two things, and I'll, I will make sure that you have a copy of that one document that I have.
If, if I could respond.
Right. Go ahead, Gil.
Thank you. Just at a, a point of emphasis that we were on a stakeholder, stakeholder call, if you want to call it that, with sixty people the day before the bill was going to be introduced. I will say that the most vocal participant, participant, it was Everest. They, they couldn't stress how, how this was going to hurt, and they said, we were, you know, we're speaking with one voice about this particular bill, this one bill, how it could hurt manufacturing in Colorado and specifically Everest. They were the most vocal on that, you know, what I, what I call a very disingenuous stakeholder process because they didn't listen to any of the concerns. So I, I really appreciate the count, appreciate the council stepping up on this one because I think people are looking to us, and Everest, Everest has, has a strong voice up there. We're actually asking them on a number of bills, including, you know, the, the, the pollution bill and some oil and gas issues where Everest has an interest, and so their, their voice is heard. So thank you.
All right. So let's give direction to our lobbyists regarding the opposition of the land use bill first. So this is for the land use bill. Counselor Martinez Ortega. Counselor Graham, Counselor Atencio. Counselor Flores, Counselor Maestri, Counselor Winner. So it sounds like five out of the seven, six out of the seven of us are going to oppose.
Okay.
Next off, we have the air quality bill or the pollution bill specifically impacting Everest in opposition. Counselor Martinez Ortega. Counselor Graham, Counselor Atencio, Counselor Flores, Counselor Maestri, Counselor Winner. So six out of the seven of us are in favor of opposition for that.
Okay, great. That is, that is awesome. Thank you so much, and we'll, we'll add that. When we finish this call, we'll, we'll add that immediately to the Secretary, Secretary of State's report, and we'll begin actively opposing both those bills.
Great. Thanks, Romero team.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Please let us know if you have any questions twenty-four seven. As these bills are heard, we'll send you the links through the administration city. We'll look for the mayor on Thursday. If you need anything on either of these bills this week, let us know. Thank you.
Oh, thanks, Gil. Moving right along on our agenda, city updates, Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council, Mayor Braddasar. I have only one update this evening, and I think Clyde's going to pull it up right now. And this is the flyer for the team up to clean up. I think the marketing pieces are, are ready to go. This will be the first, first look at any flyer, the social media campaign, press releases, other communication is not quite out. So the first look is right here on the slide. The event is scheduled for Saturday, May the sixth, from eight A M. To three P M. At the Colorado State Fair. The flyer will share, share to join us. It is at no cost, and that is highlighted. It's for Pueblo City residents only. The next section will be to share with individual, individuals, what are the accepted items with the furniture mattresses, except no carpet, yard waste that is accessible in bags and trash boxes, and tires, but limited to five without rims. And then there, I think Counselor Martinez asked Black Hills Energy if there was an opportunity in the spring for any free energy efficiency weatherization kits. Black Hills Energy has, has agreed and said that anyone coming through would receive an efficiency weatherization kit and light bulbs while the supplies do last. So all this information will go out later this week in full force. And any questions or additional information to the city, City Hall, or Director of Public Affairs, Ms. Robinson. And that is the only update that I have this evening. If you have any questions or directions for future reporting.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Solano, for sharing that flyer. Questions from council, Counselor Graham?
Solano, looking at me first, I see the marijuana excise taxes on our agenda again. Can you tell us what that is?
Mayor, can you help me with this? She's looking at the, the upcoming work session.
Yes, Dr. Hassan asked for an opportunity to talk with the council about marijuana excise tax. Again. Pardon me? Well, I don't know till we hear from him what the spiel will be. So I mean, that's, he asked for that, and that's courtesy. I thought we'd expend to him to talk about that excise tax. Counselor doesn't want to hear, but I guess that's up to.
I think it's worth listening to.
I was just wondering if it was different from last year because we, we heard him for like two hours last year. So if it's not different conversation, I don't know why we'd have him come. It's always the same. Well, that's what I'm asking him.
I know you wanted this on there, so that's why I was wondering.
Pardon me?
I know this was your ask, so that's why I was wondering if you knew if it was.
Wasn't my ask. This is what Dr. Hassan asked.
But you asked for it to go on the agenda, though, right?
Yes, because he.
That's what I was wondering, if you knew what it was in regards, since you were the middleman.
I think he wants to talk about some equity in the marijuana excise tax.
Thank you.
And I think he said for twenty-five minutes, it looks like. So I'm sure it won't be two hours.
What other questions are there from, for Ms. Solano, Counselor Winner?
I think everybody's limited to twenty-five minutes during work sessions, so maybe if we can just hold them to that.
Yeah, it usually ranges like fifteen to twenty-five, although looking, now that we're all looking at our council agenda for the upcoming foreseeable future, you will see that we do have a pretty large work session on May fifteenth with some longer presentations, one of which is our very own Director of Public Works and Director of our Parks Office about the trash cleanup, the million dollar trash cleanup program. So that's for forty minutes, so just keep in mind. Um, I did have a question, Ms. Solano, for the cleanup, team up to cleanup event. Are you looking for volunteers? Or how can people help with this?
I didn't hear myself. I think in the marketing pieces, it will, the, the marketing piece will go out for any volunteers to secure those to call or email the particular phone number.
Great. Is that going to be Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Great. Excellent. Other questions about the team up to cleanup event or city updates? Seeing none, moving right along on our agenda, then can I please have our friends from the Pueblo Youth Action Council come to the podium? Ms. Apodaca? And then can you please say your name for the record?
I'm Brianna Apodaca.
Devin Clock.
Whenever you're ready.
Alrighty, so we are the Public Youth Action Council. My name is Brianna Apodaca. Once again, I am the youth facilitator. And so we're here to present to you about our program and kind of what we've been doing. This is our second year of the program. And I'll let Devin take it away and introduce what we do.
All right. So the Pub, the Public Youth Action Council was founded with a collaboration between Youth Roots, a company based out of Inglewood, and the Packard Fund for Pueblo, and they collaborated together to make the Public Youth Action Council. This was founded in twenty twenty-one, and it is open to all freshmen in Pueblo. We also have ex-coms who are sophomores and potentially juniors and seniors. I myself, and as an, is an ex-com. And then, youth are the future, you know? Youth are the future. We are the future. We hear that every Friday at our meetings as well. The Youth Action Council wants to amplify the youth voice in the community, no matter your background, whatever you are, whoever you are. We all come from a different background, and we just want to spread our voice in the community. And
Oh, sorry. So you want to talk about the three step process that we go through?
So if you look on your screen, this is our three step grant making process. We start with a community needs assessment that leads into fundraising, and then we do grant making. This is just an overview of what we do. I will let my other youth advisor explain about the three step process.
Okay, so we gather research about the needs and we create a needs assessment after doing the research of so needs such as substance abuse, mental health, poverty, homelessness, and eating disorders. We created like an option board where people will select which one they think is most important to least important. And by doing that, we gathered one hundred fifty-three responses from public citizens, which we sent out through school, teachers, family members, et cetera. So so the research we gathered was throughout the whole responses, people want to spread more awareness about mental health, poverty, and substance abuse. And these are just statistics showing that within Pueblo and why it's important, why we should spread more awareness and why it's advocating for change. And then these are the, how the needs assessment was set up, which I, you can see, which is like the most important, like the least important, and the mental health, substance abuse, and poverty were the top three out of the one hundred fifty-three responses. And we discussed with the panel of experts about these causes for change. So, yeah.
So then our next step is funding and fundraising. So I'll let Shida go ahead and, and this is Violet, by the way. So we're, we're representative of, of a few high schools across Pueblo.
So, so far we have done four fundraisers, and we had nine impact partners, and that raised up to one thousand three hundred seventy and nineteen cents, and then the other one is six thousand nine hundred and eighty.
So do you want to talk about one of our most important fundraisers that we did with Pizza Ranch?
Um, the most important one was Pizza Ranch, where we awaited and we get like we got ten percent of it, like.
And so we'll talk about how like you were able to also converse with customers about what we're doing as a program, right? Okay, and then talk about your experience with the impact partner meetings. Like, so was your, what, what is an impact partner meeting?
You're doing great. Also, we have no idea what we're, you're talking about, so you could say anything to us, and we would believe you. So you're doing great. Keep going.
The meetings are like just like asking for money to be able to raise money for the cause that we're trying to go for.
So kind of like what we're pitching with you guys here today, they got to do individually and met with nine different impact partners. And that's where we raised a big portion of our funding, which was six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Go to the next slide. So we rate, raised a total of a thousand thousand three hundred seventy dollars and nineteen cents just through fundraising. So we did Chipotle fundraisers, we did Panda Express, we did our Pizza Ranch, we did a calendar fundraiser. But where we, where we made the most of our money was through those impact partner meetings with people from bigger foundations. So our youth group kind of acts as a mini foundation, and then we kind of ask for money from bigger foundations, and then we have people apply to. And we'll talk a little bit more about our third step process. And so in total, we raised eight thousand dollars, three hundred fifty eight thousand three hundred fifty dollars and nineteen cents. And our partner board, which is the Packard Fund, will match up to ten thousand. So we have the possibility of raising twenty thousand dollars that we can grant to local nonprofits. So the third step in our process.
So the third step is our grant making process, which is at the end of our session, which we have our grant making session this Friday where we decide where all the money that we have got through donations and other things. Where do we want it to go? We will review through all the different applications we have got, and that should be a really fun, long, educated session. I think that is all we have for you. Thank you for allowing us to present to you tonight, counsel. We are still raising funds for this important process, so if the council or anyone would like to donate to us or make a contribution, we welcome donations in any amount, and we also have donation flyers if you would like a physical copy.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation, Public Youth Action Council. I know it takes a lot of courage to get up here and speak, so I appreciate you taking some time out of your Monday night to come talk to us. What questions are there from council? Counselor Martinez Ortega?
You all did great. Thanks for coming here. What are you going to spend the money on? Maybe a little more specific, so maybe we can give you some money.
So do you want to talk about?
So based off last year, I was a first year member last year, and some of the organizations we donated to were Colorado Health Network, Spark the Change Colorado, and I think the Pueblo, Pueblo Rape Crisis Services, we also donated to Health Solutions as well. Those were our four main organizations that we donated to last year, and I think we gave each one around five thousand dollars.
That's great, and that's within your first year. That's phenomenal. I think that we should maybe work on a thousand dollar resolution from council contingencies to help support Pueblo Youth Council. And I'd like to ask the mayor's office from their contingencies to help support them as well with a thousand bucks possibly.
Counselor Flores.
Yeah, I was a, a guest at one of your functions at the Pizza Ranch, and I, I was impressed just by how they were taking care of us and, you know, filling our glasses with whatever we wanted. So kudos to you because you did an excellent job. I think it's a great learning experience to work in a restaurant. You've got to do lots of juggle a lot of things, but I, I noticed that you guys did a really excellent job.
uh to work in a restaurant. You've got to do lots of juggle a lot of things, but I I noticed that you guys did a really excellent job. Uh, the other thing I would encourage you to do uh is that there are some grants out there that could potentially double the amount of money that you've, you know, if you're willing to contribute to the cause, uh say ten thousand dollars, there are foundations that will match that. And uh I'm not an expert in that, but I know that happens all the time. And so I'd encourage you to maybe look at that as a potential of whatever money you raise and doubling it. Uh, because there are, that is uh an opportunity that uh you guys should look at. But thank you for the presentation, too. That was excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Mastry?
Um, the housing authority is going to try to reopen the center, youth of youth center act community center on the west side, and you have El Centro um that has a lot of youth activities. One thing that we're lacking here, we talk about all the time, is a recreation center for youth. And um those would be some great ways to divert the funds. You know, some of these larger health organizations and so forth, they they get Medicaid funding for people to attend, and so why double up? They're being covered. Get it where there isn't any coverage and um and so um but good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you. Um, can we get that hard copy? Can we check that out? Thanks.
You have the RFP with you? While he's doing that, can you talk a little bit about how you guys vet or like how you prioritize which agency is gonna receive funding?
So um this is just our second year doing it, um but I think a lot of it is kind of what you spoke on, like we also want to give to organizations that don't have big pots of money to dig into. So that's something that I have the youth think about when we are going through the grant applications. I want this to be completely on based on their decision, but I kind of chime in and challenge their ideas so that that they can really analyze, like yeah, some of like Health Solutions probably has a big pot of money. So like what other organizations can we donate to that don't have those big pockets of money to um go into? I think one other thing that we look at in the in their applications, we look at what projects are they wanting to fund? So we look at how many students is this gonna serve? Um, what's the long? Is it a long-term solution? Is it a short-term solution? Um, we talk about like just different things that the organization organizations are doing, um and like what what are the students prioritizing? Um, and so before we came into this grant-making session, we we made a list of priority priorities, right? Like we want kind of a balance. We don't want or we don't want to fund organizations that are funding only short-term projects or only long-term projects. We want something in the middle um to where we can see sustainable change.
Great. Other questions or comments? Being none, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight.
Thank you.
Moving right along on our agenda, then can I please have Mr. Guerrero, our new director, chief building official for the Pueblo Regional Building?
Good evening. My name's Mark Guerrero, and thank you for making time for me to introduce myself as a new chief building official. Obviously, it's a it's a great honor for me. Um, I'm a native of Pueblo and I in my um my little handout there, I kind of give you my background where, you know, I was originally born in in Bessemer and uh raised there for about seven years until we went to the Aberdeen area where I went to Carlisle and then Keating and then Central High School. You know, and uh I went away and uh became an architect, worked in Denver metro area, worked across the country as a corporate architect. Uh, shifted my career a little bit and got onto the public sector where I worked for Denver Public Schools, City and County of Denver, Front Range Community College, CSU Pueblo, uh CU Anshutes Medical Campus in different positions as executive director, campus architect, uh director of construction, senior project manager, delegate to the state architect, that sort of thing. And in the process, I've really enjoyed it. Um, I've got to do zoos and jails and schools and and elections division and Red Rocks and and different things, and that's kind of the the energy I'm gonna bring back to Pueblo because I've been through across the country, a lot of different building departments as a licensed architect, which I am. And I know as a customer of a building uh department, uh what I what my expectations are. And one of the first things I would do when I went out of state is my first visit was to the regional building department because I knew they had insight of, you know, what what challenges did my project face? You know, they gave me insight in uh now as the chief building official here in Pueblo, I I really want to encourage all our citizens of Pueblo, our government uh partners to come to us first because we have the knowledge to start you on the right path uh for whatever your project is and give you information and for free. So here in my little spiel, I I said, you know, PR BD Pueblo's gonna be polite, gonna be polite. We're gonna research your code requirement. We're gonna try to build trust with you. We're gonna try to determine if we uh responded to your request. Uh, all we do request on the other side of the paper there is that you get us involved early and uh take advantage of our expertise. As I said, I'm a licensed architect, but we have uh licensed electricians, plumbers, HVAC people that also took their certification, become plan reviewers. So one of my big um gripes with building apartments was as an architect, I would give them my drawings, and then later on in the field, the inspector had a different opinion than the the plan reviewer. Well, what I I'm heard to say is uh with through David Vaughn's leadership, the former um building official, the building inspectors are the plan uh reviewers. And so we really, you know, are trying to improve and get better each day of as far as what our public service is and what our customer service is. Uh, our mission statement is to be polite and to try to uh work your issue um at the very bottom here. You know, we're we're trying to move your project forward. We're trying not to be punitive in in our decisions, but we're trying to look for options. And we're here to support both small business and, you know, the homeowner and the large business, and I'm here to tell you we're doing very well. And um I'm just very happy to be back here. A little uh thing you might know not know about me is I I've lived in um we've owned the same house in uh my family's owned the same house in Bessemer for seventy-five years. I recently bought it from my dad about five years ago, remodeled the heck out of it, and that's where I'm living now. So from the the house I I grew up from zero to seven, I uh I'm living in now. It's the street I learned how to ride a bike. You know, played with the kids that were on the street there. And uh just really my my family's here. My parents are eighty-five years old, so that's icing on the cake to to be back for the part that a part of my career to see them. My brothers are are both here, so I'm just very excited to be back uh in Pueblo. And I hope to contribute my voice and my perspective and my background to whatever your efforts are, you know, in Pueblo means business or or whatever your, you know, the challenge is. So again, thank you very much for allowing me the time. I've talked to some of you individually because I think it's important for us to understand who each other is in in network that way and give you a comfort level that you could call me and uh and maybe seek some advice, or maybe I can call you and seek some advice either way, you know, and uh uh I'm just very happy to be here, and I I thank you so much for your time.
Fantastic. Well, welcome, Mr. Guerrero. What are there any questions from council? Yeah, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Um, I do have a quick question.
Yes.
Well, so I know that there are at, you know, the city and the county have rolled out uh Pueblo Place as really an online um system to to try and expedite permitting and zoning and and all of that stuff. And I know that regional maybe wasn't on Pueblo Place yet. Do is there um a thought or a vision of?
Well, I think you're referring to Open Gov.
Open Gov.
And so uh actually, our technicians, our IT people are kind of the uh the anchors for that development. And it kind of floundered a while until Pueblo Regional really took the reins and started uh developing uh that so we can also communicate with uh the county and the city. As you know, we're a standalone entity. We're not the city. We're not the county. But we were we were cruising right along with our own deal, but we were open to the idea of going to Open Gov so we could better talk to our uh what we call our routing partners, you know, where to be the community development or wastewater or the fire or whoever. Uh, we think communication is the key, and I I think that, you know, we're gonna have some growing pains going through there, but we're we're open to the challenge and we're up to the challenge, and we're gonna we're gonna do our best.
Um, Madam Clerk?
I will say, um, the city clerk's office works with regional building, and they are in our Open Gov system, which is correctly called the Pueblo Place system in the um public side of it. Um, and uh they have worked well with the city clerk's staff in making sure that the liquor licensing and marijuana licensing um buildings are all checked off, and so they may they may not have their own system for it, but pieces of their system has been integrated with ours, including um the regional building sign-off that allows them authorization to actually go onto the property to do their inspections.
Great. That's what I like to hear. Counselor Tensio?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that when Mark interviewed uh with the board for this position, that we were really impressed with not only his credentials, but uh the fact that he was a Pueblo native and that he knew exactly what was needed for the department and for the city of Pueblo. So I'm looking forward to some really big things, some really good things from uh Pueblo Regional Building. Thanks to you, Mark. Thank you.
Fantastic. Well, thanks, Mr. Guerrero, for joining us on a Monday evening. Moving right along on our agenda, then, um can I please have Mr. Rivera to the podium to talk about a skateboard perk proposal?
Good evening, council. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity here this evening. Um I think I have a little paper for y'all. Is that okay?
Yeah, come on up, Brian.
I'm just waiting. I do not. That one you want to advance? Okay, all right. Thank you. Um Morning Star Creations, five-one-three C nonprofit. Index about Morning Star Creations benefits, rewards, how it works, locations, timing. About Morning Star Creations, Venus is our muse, a planet of love and art. Um Our mission is to improve our city parks and river trail system by creating fun for all age groups, beautifying our community by doing litter cleanup and removal of graffiti to inspire and teach the beautiful world of industrial arts and the lost world of construction. Individual enrichment, how individuals learn, use, play, build. Collective involvement, working with others, learning and building together. Community development, a place to learn, share, and be involved in a collaborative community development, putting Pueblo on the map. The movement of movement, enhancing enhancing the community with positive outlets that will enable individuals to practice or find the art of movement. Rewards, learn how to make concrete, learn how to make concrete molds, skate molds, benches, furniture, anything concrete. Apply learning to your interest. What can you do with these new skills? Working together as a group to learn from each other. Build something to use, let's skate. Beautification of each area, clean up and enhance. Pueblo to be a hotspot. QR code points to tricks and places in the park, GPS location. How it works, practical trade skills. Dave could be any individual that's interested. Learn skills, drawing, concrete design, geometry, physics, skating. Skills applied, skating, building, applying. Personal rewards, empowerment, confidence, life skills, job skills, working together, sharing, having fun. Community benefits. Shows care, gives opportunity, builds community, provides hope, gives direction, Pueblo cares. Locations for proposed little parks, JJ Ragosa Park. Could offer concrete classes, form building classes, skate classes, special feature via three-sided pyramid, estimated cost fifteen thousand. Location number two, Moynihan Park, concrete classes, form building classes, skate classes, two-quarter pipes, a grind box, estimated cost fifteen thousand. Oops, sorry. You guys slipped it. Location Sergeant Blake Harris Skate Park. Concrete classes, form building classes, skate classes, concrete mini half-pipe, estimated cost of fifteen thousand. And here's a map of the locations of the three proposals. And the timing for each individual project, it would take approximately four weeks from start to finish. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Brian. Can you can can we go back to that slide where the maps are? Okay, I have no idea where these perks are. Can you give me a better areas or neighborhoods where these parks are?
Okay, Mo- um Moynihan Park is um in the Grove down there um by Clark Spring Water and Mon Crummel Church. Um, real antique-ish neighborhood. Um, JJ Ragosa Park is in far southwest, best my park, right? At the south end of the freeway before you get to the Pueblo Boulevard exit, right off the freeway, you can see it there. And then Sergeant Blake Harris Memorial Skate Park is uh the original skateboard park that was built in the city park, I believe, in ninety-nine or two thousand.
Great. What questions are there? Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um this question is to the mayor's office. Do we are ARPA funds available for like this forty-five thousand dollar project in these three parks? Do you know, like right offhand?
I don't know whether there are right offhand. Uh, probably they would be in lost revenue funds. Uh, I would think that there'd be. We could use those ARPA funds uh for a project like.
Yeah, or um like, because I really want, I would love to see one in JJ Ragosa Park um in my district and um or yeah, I just, I'd like to see that, this project move forward.
Counselor Tensio?
Yeah, I'd like to see these things done. These are the kind of things that should be done and um around the city so that our kids could have someplace to go and something something to do. Also, I I go down to the um skate park at El Centro all the time, and one of the things that the skaters down there ask for all the time is the half-pipe. We should be really thinking about putting a half-pipe there because I'm told if we had a half-pipe, then local and regional competitions could be held there. Right now we could serve about half a a competition, but with a half-pipe, it could really be done. And everybody suggests that the amphitheater that we built there, it it's been used once, and I used it for a a mariachi uh concert. And uh otherwise, it's it's just laying there, not being used. We should probably take that out and put a half-pipe in, and that way, an organization like yourself could bring in regional competitions, regional and state competitions to to the city of Pueblo. You know, these are the kind of things that we need for the for the city.
Definitely.
Counselor Flores and Counselor Warner?
Uh, Brian, what a great idea this is. Uh, you know, you have my full support on it. Uh, I was just trying to see the mechanics of this. I know that Morning Star is a, you say it's a nonprofit.
Yes, sir.
So uh when I'm thinking in terms of of uh what this is going to take, the fifteen thousand, my first thought is that that's gonna be the cost of the concrete. Uh, so could you explain how you're gonna provide uh number one, how you're gonna recruit uh uh these young people that you're gonna be utilizing? And uh and and who is it or is part of this money going to go toward the training and of these individuals, or is that? How did you break up your budget between the materials, the training, and whether or not uh you need to pay someone to to maybe help you with the training?
Um, yes, we'll have, we'll definitely have to have, you know, the cost of materials. Um, and then also we'll have to have some specialized contractor come in and use a shot creek pump and stuff like that, and then I already have some kids in line to come and help us like that. Um and yeah, and then we basically have some board members here with some children here also that we're uh all gonna work together. and yeah, and then we basically have some board members here with some children here also that we're, uh, all going to work together.
And, um, there, there, you're going to have a lot of volunteers.
Yes.
Doing this, but the, 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 uh, young people that you're going to be training, uh, at the end of this will have some skills where
Yes.
They can go out and find a job in that.
Definitely.
Working with concrete is, uh, it takes a lot of years to, to really, uh, become.
Yes, just feel like, yes, I feel like there's just, uh, not enough trade schools or, you know, like, uh, even industrial arts schools that are training some of these, you know, younger people to become, you know, carpenters or concrete masons or stuff like that. It just, uh, feels like, um, another twenty years, there's going to be way less people knowing how to do any kind of trades. Just feel like we, we can pass down some of the stuff that we've learned in time.
And then last, my last question has to do with the coordination with our parks department. Uh, obviously you've already probably talked to them, right?
Yes, that, I believe they're in, uh, they are in support. They do like the ideas.
Great, great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, I, I think skateboard parks are great. Um, also City Park could use a refresher. That's pretty, I don't know, it almost looks blighted at this point. Um, I do have concerns about the cost. Um, I mean, the east side park costs a million dollars.
Yes.
So I don't know where you're getting these numbers.
Uh, these are just small little, little enhancements and then we could just build from there. This is, say like the one.
So you just have one structure?
Yes, or a couple, with a couple other little rails or whatever, just small structure. And just like, um, in Moynihan Park, we'd be able to put a couple of quarter pipes with the basketball court to make it a multi venue court.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a big, big, you know, operation or anything like that.
Okay. Well, the east side, the east side park's not all that big either. So I'm just a little confused.
Uh, I think that's twenty three thousand square feet or so. I, I, I helped build that, um, project in two thousand fifteen. I worked along with the crew that was from Florida building it.
Okay.
And, um, yeah, I think it's pretty good. It's pretty good size.
It is a pretty good park. It's a good size.
It's, it's considered probably the best park between Albuquerque and Denver.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, that's true. Just the area is kind of needs to have some attention from code enforcement for sure. But, um, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see more, more about that. Um, I don't know what else to say. I guess, I, I guess I can look online and take a look at your sketches again.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. You wouldn't believe how much the skaters themselves and, uh, it's not like they're all twelve, thirteen year old skaters. There are adults that skate there.
Forty year olds.
And, um, they police that place really well and they really take care of it.
I was just talking about this.
You know, uh, the thing is, is that if we had these, the participants would police the, the areas. They would make, uh, a, a, a big difference in the, the quality of, uh, participation in these places.
Definitely. And then putting more neighborhood skate parks in some of these other neighborhoods, you get positive movement in there. And I think it'll flush out some of the negative stuff that's going on out there.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I guess what I'm hearing from Counselor Warner and Counselor Flores is we want to make sure we're not, you're, we're not shortchanging you. And that you'll like fifteen thousand seems like a small amount of money for a large amount of concrete. So I just want to make sure that we're not shortchanging you in terms of man hour supplies, whatever you need.
Definitely. No, it's, it's, uh, that's a good number.
Okay. Counselor Maestri.
Um, Brian, do we have to have the designs like engineered or signed off by an engineer?
Um, they, they probably will. Um, I'll have to get with Mr. Meyer on that. That's what our, probably our next step was going to be. To have some kind of engineered stamp on some of the sketches that we have.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because did you figure that, that cost in also?
Um, no, but I think, I think I have some, some connections with some engineers that might be able to help out.
Because we just have to get that part of it covered. And did you, why did you pick these certain areas of the city? Is that what in, in the skater industry, uh, activity, is that what you're getting?
Um, I just feel, um, in some of those neighborhoods, there, um, while Moynihan for, um, for example, there used to be like ten skateboarders there. My son is from that area. His grandparents live there. Um, and then Ragosa Park, just feel like that's an excellent place to have a little skate venue off of the freeway and stuff like that. And just, uh, I know that park could, um, really be useful to some of the local kids in that area. I have a lot of ideas for all kinds of parks around, around our community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer, I just saw your face pop up on my screen. Do you want to say something?
No, I've been, uh, been talking with Brian for a year or two now. And so he's got a lot of good ideas and we're definitely in support of, of his ideas, those little pyramids and, and half pipes. I think he's got some talent and, uh, we'd like to, if he can get, you know, the youth involved or the skateboarders involved and help build some of these things and you get that buy-in from the community. And I think it's a win-win for everyone.
Great. Thanks, Stephen. My, my, I just have a comment that I know that PCC has a good construction program, um, at their college. And I wonder if there's an opportunity to collaborate there with the students as a nice like class project or something. Um, so maybe we can connect with the appropriate professor or whoever overlaps with the construction department, Ms. Lano.
Uh, thank you. Happy to connect. Um, also the city received, um, from, from the Public Workforce Center just last week, an opportunity to co-collaborate with a project out of the city, the National League of Cities, um, that you might have heard when you were in Washington DC. And it is, uh, uh, good jobs, great cities. Um, and our application, we were invited to apply, uh, will, um, be five, uh, city staff members that are collaborating and working with, uh, community stakeholders. And the three areas of focus will be renewable energy and solar, uh, manufacturing jobs and, uh, construction, which is easy to extend into youth. So I have my card ready to hand to you.
Thank you.
Great. Well, I think, sorry, Counselor Maestri.
Do you have, do you already have, um, stu- students in mind that you're working with?
I do. Yes.
Yes, okay.
I have a few, couple ten, uh, you know, ten, eleven year olds and also some young adults.
And you have experienced yourself in the concrete business?
Yes, I've been in.
Plan to be the teacher and.
Yes, I've been doing concrete off and on since nineteen ninety one. Uh, my first job was at the federal prison in Florence. Um, and since two thousand fifteen or so, I've been traveling around with different contractors building skateboard parks in different municipalities.
You have plenty of experience. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
You're also an artist.
Thank you.
Some of your work, it's beautiful.
Thank you. We, yeah, we just, we're lucky enough to, uh, do a little art piece on the River Levy Concrete Chessboard Table.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Warner.
Did, did you mention anything about, about Mennequa? Are you, do you have any plans for that?
Um, yes, yes.
Is that on your presentation?
No, it's not on the presentation. Not on this one. No.
Can you throw one in there?
Sure can.
And ask for more money?
Sure can. There's, there's some area I thought would be good there by the fire station. On the south side of the fire station, that would be a good area.
Oh, I think we're all excited about this. Uh, Counselor Martinez Ortega, Counselor Graham, Counselor Tenzio, Counselor Flores, Counselor Maestri, Counselor Winner. Seven thumbs up, Brian.
Thank you.
Yeah. It sounds like Ms. Lana will hand you her card and you can talk offline to coordinate.
That's it?
Oh, thanks.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
And thanks for the board members who are here. I think that's cool that you showed your support. So. Excellent. Then finally on our agenda, we dedicated some time to talk about the recent news regarding their charter amendment and ballot measure. Um, it's, I, I believe this is Mr. Jagger who's going to be giving the staff update. Um, I want to just encourage, I know that, I know that this is going to be a big topic. I just want to encourage respect and decorum while we're, we're talk about this in our chambers today. So, Mr. Chagger, uh, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Martinez. So, uh, the first thing I wanted to do, I, I think the focus is what, what are potential next steps or options that council may have. And so to clearly let you know, uh, off the top, uh, the city council can refer a charter. And that's pursuant to state statute which controls with respect to charter amendments. And it may be initiated either by the petition or pursuant to an ordinance adopted by the governing body, submitting the proposed amendment to vote of the registered electors of the municipality. Such ordinance shall be adopt a ballot title for the proposed amendment. This is though, I think I want to emphasize that you need to be aware of certain issues if you want to do a special election for. Uh, the first thing is you'll need an ordinance calling a special election and directing how it'll be conducted, including if by mail. And if we're going to do by mail, we're going to have to have the Board of Electors meet and they can meet this week, uh, to make a, such a recommendation that's required by five three one of our ordinances. Um, to be timely, however, uh, the ordinance will need to be submitted, uh, at the next meeting on Monday first reading on April twenty fourth. And the reason that is, is second reading when the, would then be May eighth. Uh, if vetoed then pursuant to charter, it can only be reconsidered at a regular meeting and that would be May twenty second. Anything after a regular meeting after May twenty second is going to put you too late in the timetable. What I mean by that is after you, assuming you did enact such an ordinance to pass, it would then have to go for one publication and that would usually be a Friday. And then that would give you two dates. Cause you have to have at least sixty days after the publication. So you could either have the election on August eighth or August first, and we'll be recommending August eighth if you go that way. Uh, and the reason why it can't be any later is, is because you have to have the election, uh, no more than ninety days preceding the general election. So you got this tight timeframe. So if you're thinking of doing that, you want to make sure you know these issues upfront. In addition to an ordinance calling for the election, you, you'd also have to have an ordinance referring something, the charter amendment, whatever you decide that may be. Uh, and it would also have to be put on for first reading on May twenty fourth, because it'd have to be at the same time that you call. I'm sorry, April twenty fourth. Uh, so both these would have to be on for Mondays. If you want to do it, that, given that tight timeline, uh, the only thing we could practically recommend is that you take the petition, the city attorney's office would have, you know, two days to review it. So to that extent, all we're going to do is review it as to form. And there would be some minor changes and we'd send a red line, uh, to the petitioners, but, uh, we would not review it substantive. Given that type timeframe, I think that's the best you could probably do if you wanted to get something on for a special election. Now, if you want to put it on a general election, that would give you much more time. You could, uh, try and determine what, if you want something different as far as a charter. And if you want to do that, we would like some, I would recommend that you, you develop some method to determine what you want that to be. Now, I say that because if you're doing a charter amendment, you really want to take your time and think about what you're putting into it, what the ramifications are. So, uh, if you want to do something more than that, I think we want clear direction and, and some process to work out as to how to create that and what you want. Um, so that's kind of issues going forward. Obviously, if you do it at the general, you can, you can do the charter, the, the ordinance referring a charter amendment at some time later, all the way up into mid-August, I think. Uh, the other issue I think that, uh, there was some concern with is whether, uh, the mayor or anybody who has announced candidacy for a mayor would have any sort of prohibited conflict of interest voting on either of those two measures. And I've reviewed it and I do not think, I do not believe you have any prohibited conflict by law. Our code of ethics would be inappable because you're not employees and that's clear by charter. Uh, and it's just too tenuous because you're not actually voting charter amendment. That'll be left up to the voters. So you're just referring the actual decision to actually amend the charters left. And so I hope I addressed, uh, some of the questions as far as next steps. And, um, I hope that I certainly will answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Mr. Jagger. I appreciate that. Um, Counselor Winner.
So, um, as you all know, I've already contacted, um, Mr. Jagger about putting this on the agenda, uh, for first reading next Monday. Um, I also wondered if it's possible to do a, um, emergency meeting or an emergency ordinance.
So what would be the purpose and we would recommend against it?
Well, the purpose would be, uh, you're asking me what the purpose would be? Was that your question? Uh, to, to make sure that we get it on the, um, August eighth.
No, if we, if we have it for first reading on the twenty fourth, you'll have, you'll meet the timelines. You'll be.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
But the, the election date will probably be August eighth.
Counselor Flores.
Oh, and, and you should know, and also I should let the clerk speak to this, because there are going to be some issues. And they can address it when you get the ordinance, uh, referring it for an election. And that we do not have coordinated election. There should be some additional costs. And she can walk you through any of those concerns with respect to a special election.
Count, why don't you talk a little bit about that?
Um, uh, we did have conversations with the county clerk in terms of what coordination would be possible. Um, in, because we were, you know, initially looking forward, um, before the signatures were entirely counted on what we would need to do to get a jump start on this. And, um, the, the county clerk will not be able to do any type of coordination with us with an August date. Um, they had previously told us that they were going to try to let us use some of their equipment and some of their space. Um, but with the timeline in August rather than in July, which we had hoped for, um, we're not going to be able to use their Agilis machine, which is basically what does the signature match verification for ballots. And we wouldn't be able to, um, use their space, uh, in the Wells Fargo Center, which is where they're moving to, um, for use during the election either. So, uh, I had previously projected the costs, um, around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that special election. Um, I had narrowed the cost down to, uh, two hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars, actually going and getting quotes from everyone. Um, but I do not have an updated estimate on how much the, uh, Agilis equipment would potentially cost or how that would work or, um, on any additional space that we would, um, have to either find or rent as part of those costs.
Do you have a ballpark number, Marissa?
I, I really don't. So it would be above and beyond the two hundred and thirty seven thousand.
Counselor Flores.
I, I just had some procedural questions, uh, and one of them is the, uh, the thought. My thought was when, uh, the anti-mayor movement, uh, uh, organization was moving forward, that it was going to put everything back to the position we were in as a city before we, uh, had a mayor. But as I understand, uh, the, 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 that is not the case, that there's more in this ballot issue uh, that is going to have some provisions, uh, probably giving the city manager, if we went back that way, a lot less power. And, and so I guess my question is, who is, who, where does the, the wording and the verbiage and everything that goes into a ballot, how is that going to be managed? I mean, is it going to be us as a city council? Is it the organization that wants, uh, the anti, the anti-mayor organization that puts the verbiage together? Because they're not in concert, uh, you know, the, the, the ordinance that they want to pass is different. Uh, and, and a lot of different ways. And you've had a chance to analyze that. Could you walk us through that? Yeah. So, okay, first off, given the tight timeline we have, the recommendation is if you want to go forward with something, the best that we're going to be able to do is just review and approve, make changes as to form, as to the petitioner's proposed charter amendment. That proposed charter amendment does not, uh, just rescind the prior ordinance creating it. It makes some tweaks and changes and that can be reviewed at second reading. Uh, this winner could provide those. One that I noticed that I think is significant is it does give council the authority to appoint, uh, department heads, which is, is, is somewhat different. It does give council the authority to appoint department heads, which is different than what existed prior to the mayor form. I'm sure there's other changes in there, uh, but we could certainly review those. And I don't know them all in detail. We could certainly review those, uh, at second reading, uh, for submission of the ballot.
Counselor Winner.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not that much different. Um, prior, the city manager appointed, um, the city manager appointed, uh, actually, sorry, the council, the, this municipal judge, um, was hired and answered to the council. So that's the same as. was hired and answered to the council. So that's the same as it was with city manager. The only thing that's different here would be the city attorney reports to council and is hired and fired by council. And of course, the chief of staff is gone immediately, as well as the the mayor. Now, mind you, the current charter states that the mayor shall be chief of staff. So I don't know. It seems immediately that a chief of staff was hired. So a city manager is the chief of staff. So that position is gone. And then, of course, the city clerk answers to the council. So those are the only only thing. There's not it's not all department heads. So it's not it's not completely different.
So why we're here is is there was concern with respect to what had happened in the fairness. And so what we're trying to address is what can you do, given your short timeline? As to the contents of it, that can be more fully explored when you have a public hearing. But as to that statement, I don't think that's accurate. That can be reviewed at the time if you put it on. What I am telling you that if you want a special election, you want to put that petition form on, you're going to have to do it Monday. You're also going to have to have an ordinance calling for a special election, at least for first reading on Monday. Sorry, I'm trying to speak as loud as I can.
Counselor Attentio.
Yeah, the problem I see with this is that the council is going to have no input into either the ordinance or the charter amendment. We're just going to throw it into an ordinance to be read first reading and second reading, and maybe we might be able to make some amendments on second reading. But this is really important. We shouldn't. On second reading, what each one of us gets a couple of minutes to put some input into an order on a charter amendment that's so important to the city and the city residents that we only get a couple of minutes each to for some kind of input. We should have if the city council is going to put a charter amendment, then we should bet this thing for a longer period of time than a few minutes on second reading. And we don't have the time to sit down and and figure out what we really want in terms of the charter, whether it's a mayor or or a city manager. So I just don't think we have the time. And to rush it just because of time limitations is not the way to do it. That's not the way to run a city, a business or anything else. So I just don't think we have the time.
Counselor Graham, did you have anything?
Just to clarify, the ordinance, because Counselor Winner has requested it, we will have it on first reading on the twenty fourth, correct? Because any counselor can bring any ordinance forward, regardless if we're in agreeance or not. Is that what I'm hearing, Mr. Jagger?
I will draft a direction about what you do with it. But what I am telling you is that's your time limit. That's the best you could do in the time limit to address that specification.
Typically, that's that's how it works. And so and then in two weeks, it will be on second reading and it may be on second. And if it fails, then what is the other option? Will that be to put it on the November election? Because I would assume some counselors would be okay with a November election, but not paying upwards of three hundred thousand dollars for a special election. So without being able to decide that tonight, is this how this will play out? She's requested an ordinance. It will be on first reading on the twenty fourth, final reading on the eighth. We'll vote it up or down. Most likely, we'll vote it down, and then it can it be put back on for a November election if that's how the council sees fit?
Yeah, you would have to have an ordinance submitting another charter amendment to the general election. You'd have to do that sometime.
And this would be a charter amendment that could be something as simple as just referring back to the city.
Rescinding the prior.
Right, just a very plain, simple.
Well, you you'd actually put the text in making the changes, but that'd be the concept, and you could do that, and we could draft that. Whatever direction you want to give us on that.
Counselor Attentio.
Yeah, well, that's the problem I have with submitting a an ordinance to submit a charter amendment is that we don't know what's going to go into the charter amendment. We have no idea. We have no input. We have nothing. We have one member, and I have a lot of respect for Counselor Winner, but we got one member who is pushing this, and the rest of us are sitting here doing nothing. I I just don't. If if we're going to do it, we have to do it as a body. And and to some if the city council is going to do submit a charter amendment, we should do it as a body. We should all get together and and meet and propose each one of us propose what should go into that charter amendment and how we want this city to be run going forward. Right now, one member, yeah, we have the right to submit ordinances, but my idea of an ordinance may not be what your idea is, and something this important. Now, if we're like Mr. Ortega wants to submit an ordinance to to give some money to to Rocky Mountain Service, which is fine. But something like this isn't an appropriation of of money for an organization. This is really important to the future of the city, and it shouldn't be done helter-skelter in in terms of just, oh, let's just throw an ordinance out there and and see what happens. We really have to think this out as to what kind of a charter amendment we're going to put on the ballot when we just don't even for August, even for November, we don't have enough time, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, Counselor Graham and then Counselor Winner. Oh, you okay, Counselor Winner?
Yeah, if you want to just do a resend, that's fine, too. But you're still going to have the city manager. You're still going to have city council hiring and and the judge answering to the city council. That would be a resend. I mean, that's how it was before. I mean, that's I I mean, that's the only only difference. The judge was hired and answered to the city council. And that would be a straight resend.
Counselor Flores.
Just for the record, I've been I'm looking at our city clerk. As I understand the 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 number that was given to this group was wrong. But that number, the threshold to that number was never met. So that's that's a point that's really important here. And then the other thing is that to what extent, when you have an organized committee wanting to put this ballot issue on by petition, isn't it in their interest to have their own legal counsel putting this together and not our city attorney? So I guess that's a does that make sense as a question to you, Bob? Say, I'm saying the question is this. We we have a submission through our city clerk of an organized committee that would like to put a ballot issue on by petition and not just I'm just talking about this, but anyone that wants to do this. They have the ability to do that. But it would seem to me that the logic would be and the responsibility would be on the committee to hire their own legal counsel to put the wording together in a certain fashion. Now, you're being and you're being put in a position to edit it, make sure that it complies with the proper verbiage too and wording, that we don't have a ballot issue that should be two ballot issues. And the question is, how do we reconcile that as a city council?
Well, the the first thing is right, and it's on the website, hire hire an attorney. It's important, especially if you're doing a charter amendment. And then there's the process gets worked out. I think when they file the they work it out with the city attorney and try and resolve those issues. I think they did with our our law department a couple for a while. I wasn't involved. But as far as is there anything formalized? No. I know we had drafted ordinances in the past, which put together a better process for actually finalizing petition forms like Springs had, but I don't think it went anywhere with our council.
Counselor, well, Counselor Flores is that, I guess. Winner.
Well, Mr. Jagger can verify that this group has hired an attorney. And what it what's with the smirk, Nick? What's with the smirking? You just smirked. So we have had a we do have an attorney, and Bob has that information. The the number, everybody, everybody keeps saying that we didn't make that number, but but the group did make that number. There were four petitions where they say that they were dismantled, and they weren't they weren't dismantled completely. You could clearly see where, you know, it's a charter amendment, so it's fairly thick. And, you know, you're out there in the wind, et cetera. So you could clearly see how one staple had gone all the way through on these four on one side, and the other staple had not gone all the way through. Marissa could probably verify that. So when we had them notarized, the night we were having them notarized, we were advised by our notary, who was the city clerk for forty years, that, you know, you can't staple anything back together. So she said to just put a paperclip on him and let the city clerk know what happened. So we had those three petitions, and then we had one petition that was missing that notary page completely. So he just handwrote on the back of the very last page of the signature page, wrote out the notary exactly like it is typed, only handwritten, and she notarized that. We were informed by Marissa that she accepted that one. When we had our fifteen fifteen days to cure, we asked if we could cure the other three in the same manner, and she said yes. It's my understanding that after the four people that are probably the most vulnerable in this amendment met with the outside attorney and determined that those signatures were no longer any good. But Bob can certainly read what the the attorney has turned in and and kind of go from there.
So the the petition's been ruled on. I'm not going to get into all that. What we were trying to focus on is what, if any, next steps. Councilmember Winner has requested that the petition, that charter amendment they had by the petition be put on. And I'm trying to give you guidance that look, if you want to do it, you want to do a special election, it has to be Monday. And we're also going to have to have an ordinance calling for a special election.
Can I clarify, Mr. Jagger, then? So you're seeking advice to put an ordinance?
I'm not seeking any. I just want to let you know that this is a you wanted input as far as what's what next steps are and what are the requirements, and that's what they are. And so I at least want to provide that. That's what I believe.
Okay.
I'm not making a recommendation. This winner has the right to request the ordinance be put on. And so I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, that helps. Counselor Maestri.
Moving forward, when we're talking about a resolution on how to take care of this in the future, we shouldn't offer anything. We shouldn't offer a guideline. We shouldn't offer numbers. We shouldn't offer anything to the public if we are going to turn around if, you know, if there's a case of incompetency, incompetency, incompetency with our with our administration, and then we can't hold to our word because ethically it's not right to do that. It it stains the democratic process and how it works. And so we shouldn't have things posted. So maybe we need to write that up as a resolution that we don't offer how many signatures are needed, whether it's five percent, ten percent, what that number is. Because we are putting ourselves in jeopardy when we put that we publicize it on the website, we put it in writing on a handout guideline, and then we write it on a petition stating that's how many signatures are needed. And so I would like to, if we're going to correct this situation, we need to come up with a resolution that protects us in the future because as we are facing now is not only humiliation of the lack of competency within this the legal department. And, you know, it it doesn't shine. It's a travesty to see that this has been perpetrated on the citizens of Pueblo with misinformation. And then it's like, oh, too bad, so sad. You should have a legal counsel. You know, we have with taxpayer money, we have all the legal counsel we can afford. Citizens don't always have that luxury. They want to bring something forward. They want to have their voice heard. And for us to say, oh, well, you need to get your own attorney because we could possibly be incompetent when in this matter. That's not fair. That's not fair. And going back to it, I mean, in all of this, I want to I just I'm just going to read something really quick. It's just one one little short pair of sentence, couple of sentences here that we want to consider in trying to rectify this even as a council. "The missions of the city of Pueblo is to assure that the public has confidence in in the integrity of all aspects of city government and the public servants that exercise discretionary powers." "We have no choice but try to rectify this because otherwise we're not even listening, living up to our own mission statement." And so if that has say we have to move to the November election, then maybe that's what we have to do. But I think that as counselors and representatives, because we don't, we don't represent the city, we don't represent the mayor, and we don't represent ourselves. What we represent are the people of this community. And so I just ask that council consider that when we make this decision.
You know, I didn't. I'm I'm going to just remind remind our audience members to please be respectful of our conversation up here, please. Counselor Winner.
So this pointing the finger back at this group for not having an attorney, you know, the charter, the charter amendment was approved by the city clerk, and we were given the number of three thousand seven hundred and sixty eight. I think if we had hired an attorney to put the charter amendment together, the same thing would have happened. The attorney would have said, well, how many signatures do we need? Three thousand seven hundred and sixty eight. We probably would have went with that. You also need to remember that our mayor was the chair of the Blue Ribbon Committee for two decades and came to council in and the strong mayor question was on the ballot in two thousand nine. And I I don't know if the council put that on the ballot or or not. I'm not sure. I couldn't get that information. But in two thousand seventeen, the mayor, the current mayor, Nick, came to council and asked council to put it on the ballot because it was just so many signatures. Now, you mean to tell me that five years later, he didn't realize that wasn't enough signatures? You didn't remember that it was more than more that that it wasn't a percentage of of the folks that voted in the last election? Or was it a percentage of the registered voters? It just seems to me if I was pushing to be to be mayor for two decades and had it on the ballot in two thousand nine that failed miserably, and then came to council and said it's just too many signatures. I mean, this has been in the media. Every single piece of information we received from the city clerk's office said three thousand seven hundred and sixty eight. So I just wanted to point that out.
Other questions, Counselor Graham?
I agree with Counselor Winner. I I'm not in favor of a special election costing the taxpayers all this money, but I'm in favor of putting first in Ms. Stoller's office last week, and you did what you did because that's what you were told to do. And I think it's it's wrong if the council doesn't rectify this. In some way, I don't know if the special election is is what the rest of the council is going to choose to do. I'm not going to choose to do that, but I'm I'm not opposed to putting it on the November ballot because you guys did exactly what the city told you to do. And this this isn't just for petitioning. I mean, it's for marijuana. It's for liquor. I petitioned several times, and every single time I go down there and they tell me exactly what I'm supposed to do and what houses I'm supposed to hit. I've never I've never hired outside counsel to go over the documents with me to tell me whether the city was correct or incorrect. And so I I understand your frustrations. I understand Counselor Winner's frustration and Counselor Maestri's frustration. And what the city did was not right. And I do apologize. I know it's awful. You guys spent a lot of time and hour and money and out there, and it it's a bad situation for not only you guys, but but also us. And I believe it's it's, you know, two parties at fault. Maybe if you guys did have an attorney, they would have caught it. I don't know. I don't know how this gets caught at the twelfth hour. I don't know how the mayor didn't catch it. I don't know how the clerk's office didn't catch it. And I don't know how how. And I don't know how how no one caught this. I mean, it it seems like this is such a huge issue right now that this is something that we should have had 20 sets of eyes on and this mistake should have never happened. And I do apologize that it did, and I hope the council can make this right to you in some form because you guys deserve it.
Mr. Jagger, can you maybe talk a little bit about earlier you mentioned an ordinance drafted from our neighbors in Springs about preventing something similar in their community?
Oh, it's just something when you you were asking, I think uh Councilmember Flores asked about how do you how do you address these issues? Especially as to language changes or differences. Uh, and I I my recollection was is early on when Dan came in, he tried to get a similar process Springs has in place for determining uh petition language as like an initiative and what how that's, and there was a process they had built out. I'd have to go back and look. But I think it was uh was when we did the no smoking and it was after that, there were some 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 hard feelings about that. So I don't know. I'd have to go back and pull that. But uh, I remember that it it didn't go anywhere, but it sounded like a real good idea. That way you have a nice process in place. And it was primary, it was less to do with petitions and getting the right numbers and more to do with getting the right language so that it was legally acceptable and accomplish what they the intent was, but didn't do something legally impermissible.
Yeah, I I do think that we need a better process. I think that we need a really good uh codified process that's black and white in order to prevent something like this in the future. Um, so I I do agree with Counselor Maistry. I don't know if not giving them anything is the solution, but I think that having some type of process in place to move forward. Um, so I don't, I don't, maybe we need to revisit the Springs uh case study if it's working. Um because we need to, we need to prevent this in the future. So Counselor Winner, did you have something?
Um, I don't know. I forgot.
Uh, just to reconcile and kind of end this. It looks like we're going to have first reading next week and then we'll have a public hearing um in two weeks after that. So we're gonna have plenty of time, I guess, to discuss this in more depth. Uh, because right now, uh, you know, we're not going to take any action tonight. So I I'm I'm just going to defer all of my comments in the way I feel at the appropriate time.
Hey.
Okay, so I did remember. Um, what I was going to ask is about the county saying again that they're not going to be ready to do an election for anybody. Um, when I spoke to Marissa before, she said that they were moving in June and that they wouldn't be able to do a July election. So I said, well, if they're moving in June, they should be ready by July. Um, I would like to speak to the county commissioners and and one, I want to know what's going on with that. And um, it just doesn't make any sense to me at all. Maybe they shouldn't move the um the the counter until this is all done.
So my understanding from the county clerk is that there are election laws coming down on June 30th that require that they have cameras in place around their election equipment. It's updated security uh measures that have to be done. And those cameras are being put in place at the Wells Fargo Center. And so they are moving their equipment to Wells Fargo Center before that deadline um so that everything is installed and ready to go there. Uh, but the reason that they would not be able to do uh an earlier than July election is different from the reason that they wouldn't be able to do an August election. The reason they wouldn't be able to help us out in August is because at that point they are getting their ducks in a row for the November ballot and they're only able, the system apparently is only able to support one election at a time. So obviously, um, if we are moving forward with a special election, I will have another conversation with the county clerk. Um, she has been very kind and very willing to do whatever she can to help us. Um, but she has already said that that a later um August election would not work for her department.
Is she certified finally?
Uh, I believe that she'll be certified by May.
By May? Okay.
Counselor Flores.
Uh, just to clarify, uh, the county clerk uh is a position that's based on Colorado statute. The county commissioners have no authority over her. Uh, all of the county officials have their own statutory requirements. She answers to the Secretary of State and not to the county commissioners.
Counselor Winner.
Is it possible that we can have another county do this for us? Rather than a company that that charges an extraordinary amount of money?
Um, I'm not sure uh about that. I think part of the problem is a lot of this equipment can't be moved. Um, it gets certified where it's at. And if you move it, it breaks that certification. Um, but it it is something we can look into.
Okay, all right. You know, it just, it just really seems like, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a constitutional right for the citizens to petition. And it just seems like this is being purposely sabotaged and blocked. And you can sit there and shake out your head all you want, but the optics are horrible here.
Did you have anything, Mayor?
You know, let me just clarify the record here. It's my job, one of the duties imposed by me as the mayor by the city charter is to faithfully execute and enforce the laws of the city of Pueblo and the state of Colorado to the extent that they apply to the city of Pueblo. So when I became aware of this error, would have been a simple matter, maybe to just ignore it and say that number we gave you, you didn't meet that. The petitions were insufficient. That's it. But it's clear here under Colorado, under our charter and under the Colorado Constitution, the Colorado statutes that 10% of the registered electors are required to have an election. If you don't have a petition with that threshold and you put a ballot issue on the election and it passes, you are in chaos because you did not meet the legal requirements to to amend the city charter. So I think that's what we need to keep in mind. It's not that the they were fooled. They did not meet the legal requirements to submit a charter amendment to the voters of the city of Pueblo. That's the bottom line uh under the law. Uh, whether we misrepresented what the law was or not, the law wasn't met. Now, the city council can, if it wants, put it on the ballot. You know, this, we think that would be a bad idea to do that, especially the way this was written. But um, I don't know. Counselor Winner suggested a lawyer is now involved. Did a lawyer write this?
I didn't suggest it. You have a copy of it right there.
Did the lawyer write this? Constant, this charter amendment?
It's, look at it. Of course, an attorney wrote it.
Okay.
Come on.
Um that's the other thing that I missed in our resolution is that maybe we shouldn't be approving the language of a ballot initiative if we're going to have to, if they're gonna have.
That was already approved.
You know, that's the thing is we went through the process, our law law department of approving the ballot initial uh measure. And so um that might be a resolution that we don't do. If if people are required to get their own attorneys in the future, because we're we're gonna eventually work into a resolution of what we're gonna want to do here in the future. So this doesn't happen. And you know, under the mayors, I mean, this is your administration, Mayor.
Right. And this administration caught the error before there was any damage done.
No, you caught the error.
Right.
I don't think there's anything more productive that we could talk about. It sounds like we're gonna see it on Monday's um ordinance or sorry, on Monday's first reading presentation. Um, Counselor Graham.
So can you get that information on how much this is gonna? Will that give you enough time? Uh, or what what's that timeframe look like? We expect a estimate on the costs or or what's that look like for you?
Um, I'm really not sure where to start on the Agilis equipment, so I would have to um consult the county clerk. Um.
So can we have it before second reading?
I'll I'll try to get that first.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no Counselor Winner. Mr. Jagger, uh, would you be willing to meet with the uh group?
Well, what I was going to do is review it and make red line changes necessary for form and then submit it to the group so they have it in advance of first or second reading.
Okay, and you're gonna send it to the attorney also?
I'll do whatever the group desires.
Right, thank you.
Now I'm confused again. Uh, Ms. Winter suggested that we just rescind and go back to the original. Hold on.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, or are we going to go with the wordage that the group wants? And the wordage that the group wants is a lot different. So what are we doing now? Are we going to just rescind, go back to what it was originally like? Or are we going to go with the verbiage that the group wants in the charter? Now, we have two charter amendments on the table, basically. One says, Ms. Winter just suggested that we just rescind, go back to the original like we used to be before. But that's not what the group wants. So if the citizenry citizenry wants Charter B and Ms. Winter wants Charter A, which one are we gonna do?
You know, just a little FYI, originally the group, Julian Smith, turned in uh uh rescinding the mayor uh position completely. And then it came back from Kurgosik saying, no, this has to be, uh, you have to write out the charter amendment like it was in 2018. So um uh, all all that the group did was switch it from where it said mayor, went back to city manager. Um, and there were the um uh just the administrative changes as far as the um judge to report to the city council like it did before. And um also the removal.
It's too different.
It's not too different. That's not two different things. So we will have it together with Mr. Jagger here in 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 within 24 hours and you can look at it.
My question, then Ms. Winter, my understanding is you requested that the uh proposed ballot be the charter amendment in the petition. Is that correct? Because I need to.
That's correct, but we're gonna, we're gonna. Right, right. We're gonna, what we're gonna do is um, we're gonna meet and um and 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 let you know.
I don't have time for let you know.
Okay, they're right here.
If you want it, I can.
Okay, so I what I would say, what I would say at this point is to rescind, but we do need to take out the chief's chief of staff because the city manager is chief of staff.
Very difficult to do this in such a short timeframe. I can draft something. Direction I had when you called Friday was to do the petition. But the charter amendment and the petition, I can start working on that.
Okay.
But it sounds like the rest of council.
Will the rest of council get to review the petition and do we have input into it? Or are we just gonna go with what?
All we're doing here is a council member has requests that an ordinance be introduced. I'm being responsive. So that's where we're at. If we want to do it for a special, we need two ordinances. One's gotta be the charter amendment. We do not have time to negotiate terms and conditions of the ordinance. It's just not gonna work. So uh, the direction I have is to do the petition. If another council member wants me to draft another ordinance, just telling you, I'm running out of time here. So I think the whole situation arose because the petition, the issues related to it. Uh, so I can certainly approve that as deform, get those changes back to the petition.
Okay, seeing no other business, I conclude this work session at 7:13.